I call to order the virtual study session at the Lakewood City Council on November 3rd, 2025 at 7:02 PM. Good evening, everyone. To connect to the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any link to LakewoodSpeaks.org, our online public forum. It will be left open through the evening, through the night tonight and until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning for any comments related to tonight's presentation on inclusionary zoning. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors LeBier.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Cruz Kay.
Here.
Mia Guerrero.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruz I.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Nice Strom.
Here.
Great. You have a call, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. So tonight's topic, inclusionary zoning, is a topic that has been taken up by the Housing Policy Commission, maybe practically for the better part of this year. And it's now coming to the full council to get some information on the process that we've moved through with that and make some decisions on how we want to move forward. So for tonight, we will have a staff presentation and that will be led by the Sustainability and Community Development Division. And with that, I guess, Councilor Mia Guerrero, would you like me to hand you the floor before we go to staff? Nope, okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and hand it over. I'm not sure if we're going to Director Travis Parker or our Housing Manager Chris Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Connor, I see you, there you are.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Connor, I'll hand the floor to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, thank you, Council. I am going to go ahead and jump into presentation. Give me a second just to share screen here and get myself turned on for the presentation. Great, you should be seeing a cover slide here and I cannot see you anymore. So if you have your hands raised, I may need a call out for that because I'm working off of presentation deck, but then what you see is, is I'm working on my background.
You're seeing your screen.
You are not seeing the screen. Okay. Um, let me escape here.
Now it's coming up.
A sec. Okay.
There we go.
Great, so are you seeing everything's good now?
Yes.
There we go, Chris, yep.
Excellent, thank you. Um, thanks so much. Um, so the assignment, as I understand, is to kind of make a reasonably digestible presentation on the work of the Housing Policy Commission around inclusionary housing, which has gone on for some time. Uh, there's been a number of meetings dedicated to this issue. Uh, and I took the, the, the general, um, everything of it and created about 15 slides that I have for you today. It's not going to touch on every nuance of every conversation that we've had around this policy, but the good news is that I have six members of that Housing Policy Commission joining tonight as well. So if there's something that I missed touching upon that's important, certainly volunteer uh, there in sight as we go through the presentation. So a little bit of overview, I'm going to just give us a quick grounding in the housing needs analysis, uh, just to kind of give us a feeling of scope of, of the challenge that we face. This is going to be something that you've seen before in presentations from the Dr. Cog Housing Needs Analysis. Uh, we'll go over kind of inclusionary housing basics and kind of some general things that we consider when we think about crafting an inclusionary housing policy. Then we'll go through an overview of the previous work that has gone on in Housing Policy Commission and the recommendation and request for council action that, that will be before you. So before we get into talking about the policymaking, let's, let's just take a minute to consider the number of people in the city of Lakewood who are cost burdened with their house, housing. Cost burden again is a measure of the amount that a household's income that goes towards their housing and utility costs. So to be considered cost burdened, a household would need to be spending 30% or more of its income on housing and utilities. And then the category of severe cost burden in the pink applies when that household reaches, reaches spending half of its income on housing altogether. So the unfortunate direction that this arrow points is up and up and it moves quickly and in a negative direction for housing affordability for Lakewood. So these bars are presenting census data in 2000 alongside the American Community Survey data from 2022. So what we see is in that period, the rate of cost burden increases from about 30% to more than 52% of our Lakewood neighbors. The Dr. Cog Housing Needs Assessment, uh, shows the level of housing need in rent and sale categories in this chart, um, as well as by the income levels within those categories. So the, the greener field, the teal field on the left, um, represents the rental needs and the blue field on the right would represent sale housing needs with each box identified as an AMI within, or Aryan median income within each, each of those boxed sections of it. So the size of the box indicates the total amount of that type of housing that needs to be created for the labeled area median income level. So you can see at the glance where the challenges are the largest. The most significant housing need in Lakewood is for deeply affordable rental housing at very low income or zero to 50% area median income. So if the need is extended to all low income, including those earning 80% AMI or under, the need is just shy of 4,600 units. So this would be twice what the Dr. Cog Assessment, uh, reveals for all need for for sale housing, uh, which comes to around 2,200 units in total. So moving on to the policy, um, how, one way that we might confront this challenge, uh, inclusionary housing policy is generally an array of policies that govern for the production of affordable housing through a combination of levers or tools listed here. One is mandatory requirements to build affordable units. Uh, a little bit redundant how it's, how it's phrased there, but requirements to build affordable units. Uh, typically, these are referred to as a set aside proportion of units in a development that would be reserved for affordability within an AMI level. As an alternative to compliance for inclusionary housing, typically there's a pay and lieu schedule of fees uh, that a developer may come and say, I will not produce those, those units within my development, but I will pay a fee, um, equating to, to the impact of, of what those unit, missing units might, might, uh, cost. Uh, linkage fees, traditional linkage fees to develop affordable housing units. These are informed by nexus, a rational nexus between the production of a housing development and, and its impact on the need for affordable housing or voluntary cost offsets or incentives to include affordable units within a project. These are kind of primary, primary factors that build into, uh, an inclusionary housing, uh, policy. So different models of inclusionary housing can be either mandatory or voluntary. If you're going the voluntary route on an inclusionary housing policy for a city, you're typically going to give up the option of a pay and lieu, right? It's not going to be so much of a revenue generating policy as you're exchanging, um, you're exchanging, uh, incentives or cost offset, offsets voluntarily when a development comes in and says, yes, we are integrating, uh, a certain percentage of affordable units into this project. And again, uh, inclusionary housing policies can apply commercially. Uh, again, here it's kind of the inverse. If you have an inclusionary housing policy that's dedicated in the commercial realm, you're not building units within that realm. Uh, you may build units off site of that commercial development, but typically you're looking at linkage fees that are tied into a commercial development or inclusionary housing policies, uh, uh, apply to residential developments. But typically this is where we see them taking effect is in, in residential development projects. Some considerations, uh, for inclusionary housing ordinances is that they are market based. So unlike a straight tax or something, these are only going to generate units or revenue when development is happening. So if, if nothing's getting built, then there is no impact of a, uh, inclusionary housing policy. There's no benefit of it because you don't see any revenue coming in through pay and lieu. You don't see any of those units getting built. So this is completely dependent on new development, uh, happening and bears upon, uh, city growth, new growth in the city. Uh, inclusionary housing policies, they also have a market impact. So how you design your policy needs to be responsive and flexible to the market of housing development generally. Capital is fungible, it can go somewhere else. You can have an inclusionary housing policy, but you can't have a policy that forces a developer to, uh, bring their activity to the city of Lakewood, right? So all of this is important to consider, uh, when we're positioning inclusionary housing as, as part of our housing response. The policies can be designed in different ways. So they can be designed to primarily work on building units and they can be designed for primarily focusing on generating revenue through a pay and lieu structure, right? So you see some communities who are, we really want the built units who make it, um, uh, ownerless, more onerous to do the pay and lieu fee than it would be to, uh, pencil in the affordability into the project itself. Alternatively, you see some communities who are like, we really want to generate revenue, uh, through the development, who may make the pay and lieu amount less onerous than the build itself of, of affordability into a project. And finally, uh, inclusionary housing policies are, the, the strongest policies are always paired with offsets such as fee waivers and additional sources of dedicated funding. So, uh, an inclusionary housing policy does not turn the corner for communities on affordability in their communities by itself. Uh, and if it's left by itself, um, uh, it's not the strongest, uh, policy approach that, that a community could bring. So I'll move forward into some past work of, that's come through Housing Policy Commission and previously a bit through, uh, the, the, uh, drafting of, of the Strategic Housing Plan. So previous analysis has not recommended mandatory inclusionary housing programs in Lakewood, uh, but this is in a context when offsets or incentives were not available to those developments. So this is, um, largely the input of Grunen, Grunen Associates to the city's Strategic Housing Plan. Uh, this changes potentially if the, the portfolio of policies includes an ability to, um, offset costs through fee waivers, offset costs through other incentives or, or policies that generate, uh, gap financing for, for affordable projects. Other local analysis has, uh, pinpointed or, or found that if Lakewood did have an inclusionary housing ordinance over the decade of 2010 to 2020, and if that ordinance required a 10% set aside, so you either needed to set 10% of your development's, um, units into affordability or a $50,000 per unit fee in lieu, the policy would have generated either 360 units across that decade or $18 million in fee, fee in lieu. Uh, really, in realistic practice, this would, because some developments are going to opt to do the build and other developments are going to opt to pay the fee, this would have been, um, a, a dynamic between those two factors. But what it wouldn't have been is 360 units with $18 million. It would be more an either or, a combination of the two. Um, this is important to mention in, in the sense of, you know, the, the policy certainly having an impact in a role in our response to affordability. But to put this in perspective, those 360 units built across a decade would be only 75% of the affordable units within Lakewood's Prop 123 target for the year. So our Prop 123 target is to increase 475 affordable units by end of 2026, right? So, so this, uh, over the course of those 10 years does not, uh, get us past that, that initial threshold. So all to say that continued work, continued policy exploration needs to be done, uh, to really build the momentum needed to meet affordability, um, goals for the city. So, uh, a longer duration project we entered with Economic and Planning Systems, uh, was between March and August of 2025. We worked, we worked with a consulting partner, Economic and Planning Systems, to explore inclusionary housing policy models through the HPC. So, uh, their, their, um, their, their work was, uh, kind of placed before HPC as kind of their deliverables were, 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 uh, brought to that forum and discussed there. So you can catch up on Lakewood Speaks on those previous conversations that have happened during that time. So this project was scoped out to consider a couple of things that I've highlighted in yellow here that we'll go a little bit deeper on. We won't go through all of it because we don't have the time in one night to, to do justice to it all, but it did go through case study review of pure front range city policies. So there are a number of, uh, cities across the front range who have adopted inclusionary, uh, housing ordinances since they were made permissible to do so by the state, uh, a few years ago. Uh, they did stakeholder outreach, so we did focus group sessions with relevant professionals as well as advocates in the affordable housing space. They did some market and affordability analysis, uh, some economic feasibility modeling that we'll get into, which really was largely prototyping pro formas for, for, uh, uh, certain development models that, that we might see come through. And then they did do some fee and lieu modeling for us. So a little bit about the case study comparisons of front range cities. This chart identifies the cities that they did look into. Uh, everything in an inclusionary policy is found here except for what the fee and lieu rates of these communities, uh, were. But you can see that there's a broad breadth of different, different approaches to inclusionary housing. That it's not just one type or standard of, of policy that's introduced, but these, these different levers that are pulled create policies that, um, that affect the community in different ways or inform development in different ways, either generating revenue or generating units. The entry point for the policies can change. There's many factors to consider as we're crafting, uh, our policy. Uh, City of Longmont, for instance, um, they did have a, a fee in lieu that they increased by 200% just a couple of years into the policy to bring a better balance in terms of what they were trying to solve with, with their policy and generate more, more revenue. This slide, um, everybody take a deep breath because this slide, this, this chart is an important one to think about, contemplate and walk through. This chart also admittedly does not communicate very well. So, uh, I'm going to slow my delivery down a little bit to walk through, uh, the information on this chart. What's probably sticking out to you right now is the second column of red light, stop, green light goes and a yellow light, right? Caution, we'll get back to that on terms of what that means, but I, uh, I want to walk you through the feasibility testing exercise and really what's demonstrated here. Uh, try to ignore these, uh, right side three columns and let's focus here on the first, second and third column. So in the first column here, we looked at three different development scenarios. Uh, one scenario is a, a town home for sale scenario. So here we're talking about, about 19 units of town home style development with tucked under parking. Uh, so a modest piece that would be for sale. I'm going to bump through this a couple of times. So I'm going to take you from the top down here to the middle. A three-story rental, uh, development project. So this is a rental project that's maybe about 135 units that, that's, uh, uh, being presented to the city to develop. Bumping down once more gets us into, uh, more height at a five-story rental. So this type of, of project would bump up the number of units to about 280 units. So what we did for each one of these, uh, scenarios is we looked at the baseline current, just without any policy attached to it all. Is it feasible, does it pencil out? So you have a feasible baseline for town homes, a, a baseline for three-story where we're not seeing that pencil out at all. Baseline for five-story rental where we're not seeing it pencil out either. Then we broke down to what if there was a inclusionary housing policy on top of that that required a 5% set aside or a 10% set aside or fee and lieu for, for either of those? So those are the rows, um, expressed there. And so you see a lot of that kind of, kind of turning up in the red. I'm going to go through again here to say, uh, the second category or subcategory is when we introduce fee waivers. Uh, so maybe we have an inclusionary housing policy, but we have strategies to offset those costs through, uh, waiving development fees. Um, and this does include factoring a fee waiver for, uh, parkland fees, which is the most significant of those fee waivers, uh, that could be applied. So you see some of those fee waivers where if, if, if you did a 5% set aside, but the city also waived, uh, those fees, we get into that feasibility, uh, uh, green lights for many of those, right? Uh, some of them remain, um, red, some of them turn to, to yellow in, in those scenarios, right? How do we know if a project is feasible or not is in the second column. So this YOC refers to your yield on, on cost. So essentially the, the profit that's generated in the development. On the main heading here is where it needs to hit to be feasible, so 10%. Uh, for a town home for sale, developers are going to expect that 10% return on the project. So we get that in the baseline, but we don't get that if we're, we're not, if we're setting an IHO on top of it, an inclusionary housing ordinance on top of that without any fee waivers. And then you can see how these adjust, um, corresponding to, excuse me, corresponding to those different, uh, different levels there, pardon me for that interruption. So here's, here's the thing that I, I want to bring out to you. One, one more thing here, you see this term price increase and adjustments, right? Uh, what adjustments mean in these kind of analyses that, that break out after fee waivers is those are kind of market based adjustments that we may not have complete control over, but we're looking for, do things in an improved market conditions start to pencil out better? And what are those? So, uh, for sale, um, price increase would be like a 3% price increase on cost of a home. Then those start penciling out just fine, right? Uh, adjustments in rental categories, uh, would include a 5% increase in rents, 10% increases in the construction costs and developers lowering their yield on cost targets in some cases to a 5.5% instead of the 6.5% that you see here. So I know we're jumping around a lot. Told you this chart doesn't communicate too well, but here's where it kind of all, all comes home. So the, the why do in I, an inclusionary housing ordinance? Uh, is it, is the juice worth the squeeze or are we just making more red lights in the feasibility of the projects? This third column becomes the significant column to look at because what our, what our consulting partner kind of gestured to is that the factors that are, are going to turn these from, from red to green are not necessarily whether you have, um, the inclusionary housing policy or not, uh, but it, or, or how deep that inclusionary housing policy goes so much as it is your ability to generate gap funds, waive fees in that process. So, uh, let's take this three-story rental, for instance. Even though it doesn't pencil out really in any circumstance here, we're not building three stories now in Lakewood. It's just not working out. Uh, it's not getting to that 6.5% uh, yield on cost or profit that we see. We look at these different scenarios of having an inclusionary housing policy and you're not seeing a lot of movement in the, the percent that it changes that yield on cost. So having a 10% set aside policy on a three-story rental brings one tenth of 1% uh, change from the baseline, right? In between that 5% and 10%, it's not even one tenth of a percent difference or, or change or movement in the ultimate yield on costs or profit. So it's not really gouging into, the policy itself is not really gouging into, uh, whether that, that's eventually going to pencil out or not. And then you see, you see that kind of consistency all the way down, right? So it's not really the inclusionary housing ordinance lever that's, that's, uh, throwing these projects, throwing these development proposals sideways. It has, the, the bigger impact is when we're able or we have the flexibility to waive fees and when we have an availability of, of, um, dedicated revenue to apply to those development projects. Hopefully I, I walked through that carefully enough. Um, I'm sure there may be lingering questions and we can certainly return to this slide, but, um, I'm going to keep us moving forward through, through five remaining slides. So next steps that are coming out of the Housing Policy Commission. Uh, the counselors who comprise that commission have drafted a request of council action uh, to request city staff, um, namely, uh, my, my division to draft an inclusionary ordinance for review. So this would put into draft ordinance language, the articulation of the structure and proposed entry points for affordability requirements, for set asides, for fee and lieu amounts for rental and for sale proposed developments. So this is important, the draft ordinance would remain only in that draft form until such time as we could do a full nexus study, uh, to inform financial concerns and legal concerns of the policy, including potential revisions to whatever we would name and draft for those set aside fee and lieu or AMIs of rental and for sale requirements. So even though, uh, the request for council action would ask us to draft an ordinance, uh, we'd get another bite at the apple after deeper, um, study in a, in a rational nexus on whether that draft really set those targets at the, at the right spot. So city staff in the Housing Policy Commission recommend that full nexus study be completed during the, during a delayed implementation of any mandatory inclusionary housing policy. So one option would be that, uh, uh, ordinance could be drafted and passed with a delayed implementation period during which time that nexus would be completed. And so though, though we've done a lot of consultation, um, that has been provided to the Housing Policy Commission, the formal nexus informs the key factors. the formal nexus informs the key factors in the policy structure and it's standard for any policymaking that's involving the introduction of a fee to treat upon a, a critical community problem or or gap that we're seeing in the community. So it's, it's really an essential piece that we complete within the policymaking process. So as conceived or as written in the request, the initial provisions of the draft ordinance would be to set affordability requirements at eighty percent area median income or below for rental. And I did want to call out or pull out here that this is not consistent with where rental affordability would need to be for Prop one twenty three. The Prop one twenty three ceiling for affordability for rental is at sixty percent AMI and is consistent with the hundred percent AMI for, for sale developments. So the idea of what might come through draft on that, on, on, you know, how affordable do units need to be? Maybe within that realm. The unit or fee and lieu would apply to developments of more than four units. So if somebody is building a quadplex or under the inclusionary housing ordinance would not apply, it would kick in once that fifth unit is introduced into the development. On a phased dedication requirement, set aside requirement is five percent of units in qualifying new development. But the ordinance would schedule the requirement to increase to about eight percent or be adjusted in line with market analysis or the nexus over a defined number of years, which is an important piece of inclusionary housing because it is market driven. You do need to revisit and and do some maintenance on the policy to make sure that the policy is not becoming dated or outdated from, from where your market conditions might be. Then in fee and lieu compliance, the draft ordinance would include a fee and lieu alternative for the compliance. And this would be structured according to some of the peer city analysis is where we introduce what that fee and lieu would be. That fee and loose schedule would then further be informed by, by the, the rational nexus, the nexus study that, that we would complete. That pretty much comprises what's in the request for council action. And at that, we can certainly wrap up for, for discussion here or I'd be happy to open to other members of the HPC if there's anything initially that, that you'd want to put into the, the conversation.
Councilor Mayat Guerrero.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Chris Connor. I just want to take a, a brief second to echo some of the core concepts that were brought into this at the beginning of this conversation. You are still sharing your screen, just so that you know.
Oh, I am.
And to say that truly this has been a project that has stretched over a handful of different committees. And, you know, a, a lot of what, and I think this really got lost in our original and some of our like later zoning conversations, but was captured in our original zoning conversations eighteen months, two years ago, which is that a lot of what's in our new zoning ordinances are things that were recommended by that, that original consulting, consulting firm that did our strategic housing plan. So a fair amount of thinking about your lot sizes, your like potential density, your setbacks, like how all those things work together, your pacing of permits, all those kinds of things that ended up either in that zoning or in some other like small, slightly smaller tweaks and adjustments that have happened over the last eighteen months to two years. But that inclusionary zoning was something that felt a little bit more ambitious and also to Mr. Connor's point at the beginning, really difficult to get that balance right, especially when you're actually in a market where there's a lot of building happening. And the timing of that and the thoughtfulness with which you have to approach it and that the, the pro and the con of our current market is that not a lot of building is, is likely to happen. But it does give us a little bit of this runway of this stretch to try to get these numbers right, to get this nexus study done and to work on the policy that will actualize two to five years of various individuals on staff and on councils work on, on inclusionary zoning, on inclusionary housing ordinance. And I also want to point out that I think we, we also did a lot of looking at other cities examples, other towns examples and where municipalities are having to roll back or adjust numbers versus ones where it started really slow and steady, but it's just able to continue where it's at as, as markets ebb and flow over the course of years. So I do really want to thank staff and also the HPC members, particularly because just truly the amount of hours that has gone into this thinking would be hard to enumerate. But we are in this place where we have, where we have this information. And again, to, to recognize that fair amount of the memo that you all received from HPC year and a half ago, a fair amount of that resolution that we passed about zoning last December and really like the intentionality and a lot of the recommendations that came out of that original strategic housing plan did actually get done through our zoning process, which is awesome. And that means that this is now the right moment to be tackling this, for this to be the next step in that long list of things that we need to do to try to help relieve some of the pressure on. I was going to say on the most vulnerable in Lakewood, but honestly on all of us, because any of us who are paying for housing and living in Lakewood right now are, are experiencing those realities. And so with that, I'll turn it over to questions, but I did, I just wanted to give an extra thanks and an extra shout out. Mr. Connor has been a champ, but there's a lot of folks who've put in a lot of work on this for several years and I'm, I'm excited to see some of it start to come to fruition.
Thank you, Councilor Mayat Guerrero. Okay, we have Mayor Potem Charzaid and Councilor Isabel Cruz and Councilor Furman.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate, and this has been a conversation we've been having for a long time. Glad to see Chair Mayat Guerrero get to host this conversation in one of her final study sessions. I just, I have a couple of questions. So case studies of peers on the front range were used. I know there's also some pending litigation there. Is that sorted out? Is it still pending? Did that come into this conversation at all?
It, it didn't come in directly on this conversation, but we're aware of some of the, the legal challenges that, that are being explored around these types of policies, which makes it all the more important to invest in the process of, of doing that formal nexus study to make sure that our policy is crafted with, with that, that in mind, yeah. So, but we did not, we did not, since there haven't been outcomes on many of those cases, it didn't really inform our appraisal just yet, but I know the city attorney has been monitoring.
Great. And then, and you're in the complicated graph for info sheet, you know, there was a mention of like, where does it start to become feasible? And it's pointing to fees and you mentioned parkland dedication, but is there another substantive fee that we could look at in waving or is it always going to come down to parkland dedication for this to be reasonable?
Parkland is going to be a big one of that. There's a number of other things that, that have been integrated and, and proposing what we could reasonably waive and, and what's within our control. So, you know, whether it's, it's plan review fees, building permit fees, use taxes or site plan reviews, those things, the, the more we can take off, off the developer's plate and, and waive those fees, the more feasible we can make those projects. But parkland is, is the significant one in, in the mix of that.
Great. And thanks for that. And then my last question, and this may just be for the committee. I like, it's obvious fees and lieu in parkland, like we use those fees and lieu and we dedicate it to projects that relate to parks and open spaces. I'm just wondering, has there been, like, what would we use fees and lieu? If we were collecting this, if people were sort of purchasing their way out of this? Because I, I don't know that we are interested in being landlords. So I guess I would want to understand like, what would that money be allocated towards? And that was my last question. So thank you.
Mayor, I think that Mayor Potem, was that, that question was directed to either members of the committee or me, or would you?
I would say whoever has an ID, like has the, did you think about that in the HPC? And, and maybe just a little insight on what that conversation looked like.
Yeah, my, my sense is, thank you.
We have, we have discussed it. One of the key reasons that we don't have a really clear recommendation on that is truly because the amount of money that we expect would actually be generated in the first couple of years is, is frankly not that high. And so when we look at the types of things that would make sense, particularly right when we're under the laws of papers, making sure that it's money that goes to something that is directly related to the fee that we're charging. Looking at housing, to your point about not wanting to be landlords, there are potential for things like land banking, for trying to keep people housed with rental assistance, right? There's like sort of a long list of stuff to do, all of which are really expensive to make even a real dent in. And so one of the, the, one of the things to really want to think about where that money goes is a, that, that just the dollar amount, because frankly, like I said, it's going to be very limited at first. Wanting things to be able to accumulate to the point where it can be more meaningful and also then needing it to stay like issue specific. The other, the other component, I would be curious if other HPC members would like to like chime in with the conversations that we've had about this topic, because the other key component is that the HPC is really interested in sort of the next priority being thinking about a housing fund, whether or not that's actually to subsidize units or to subsidize, you know, deed restriction, or if it's to, like I said, like create more like rental assistance, mortgage assistance, new home buyers assistance, stuff like that in that nature. All of that has kind of been tossed around. There's a lot of options in various ways. But thinking about having the amount of money actually be enough to be helpful in the world of housing, whether it's keeping people housed or building new, it's just at scales of magnitude compared to what we would get from an inclusionary housing ordinance, no matter really how you structure it. And so it needs to go along with some of those other conversations about creating some type of affordability and housing fund and like what the parameters would be there. And it's very likely that we would want this to kind of feed into whatever that broader idea is. But also again, recognizing that it's going to be a slightly smaller, a relatively small amount of money at first, that, that's not a good reason to not make the ordinance happen. And that we do have the potential to set up like a cost center, like we do with sustainability to allow that to happen until we hit the kinds of numbers from other additional revenue sources that would require like a, a taper fund or an enterprise fund that's more formalized. So that was sort of a lot, and I do wonder if others have, have thoughts or want to add if I've not characterized our conversations well.
Well. Councilor Labir.
Yeah, I'm happy to add, and maybe Chris can, we'll, we'll be able to speak more clearly to it. But I think one of the thoughts too, is that we're going to need some incentive dollars to be able to keep some properties deed restricted and to maintain the properties that we already have deed restricted. So I think that's probably one of those areas that we would be looking at to, to use those kind of funds.
Yeah.
All right, Ken. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I generally agree. So a, a couple areas is one, we, we do have a cost center identified to receive affordable housing revenue. So we would have a place to, to place that. A, a couple of things, as Councilor Libra mentioned, preservation of existing affordable housing and the, the expiration of covenant protected affordable housing is, is a real issue where this might be able to come into play. The other thing that I had mentioned is the consultation in that list of, of, of activities that we had them do. They did do a stakeholder session and what we heard in that stakeholder session is the primary need is for gap financing, is for dollars straight to go to affordable housing projects. So, so generating a cost center that has those dollars or, or keeps those dollars may, may apply in that direction to meet that, that request from the community.
Councilor Cruz.
Thank you. When I echo the gratitude for this information and for all of the work that has gone to get us here, excited for the next steps. So I had a couple of questions. One, is there kind of a thought around what the timing of the nexus study or the potential to move a draft ordinance forward could look like?
In my sense, I, I think, I think the request for council action did put out a, a, a soft timeframe of trying to get things accomplished by, I, correct me if I'm not remembering, but six months into twenty twenty six. I do think there's a lot that's been done already in the consultation. And a nexus, we have not gone out to bid, have not gone out to solicitation for this. They might look at the, the, the work that has already been completed and, and see that they can build upon that to move a nexus analysis forward sooner than if they were starting from scratch. But we wouldn't know until we really engaged that procurement process and worked with that independent partner to, to know what timeline they would set out for completing nexus.
Okay, that's helpful. Do we have an under, like a timing for the next steps in procurement?
I think right now it's working to identify budget for, to, to fuel the procurement. So we've, we've not released a, a procurement at this point, and so that would be a, a conversation with finance.
Okay, yeah, that would be, I would be interested to, for us to move forward as, you know, explicitly as possible with the timeline we've had so far. But totally understand that there are aspects to that. The second question I had was, so just to clarify with the fee waiver question, are the, are the fee waivers in question just for the affordable units or whatever the percentage would be?
Yeah, I, I think there would be a schedule on, on those fee waivers. For instance, kind of how it gets structured in our expedited review is a, a project becomes eligible when it's fifty percent affordable at the Prop one twenty three levels. Then, then it's eligible for a ninety day permit review, right? I think fee waivers could probably look similar on, on a schedule. It may not be fifty percent, might not be that deep. But it would be at the point where you meet your five percent or your ten percent set aside. A, a schedule of, of fee waivers would, would be applied.
Okay, and that schedule would be based on like how affordable.
I think it, well, I think it could be conceived on like, there's a difference between a ten percent set aside and a twelve percent set aside, right? I think you could, you could think through kind of how you want to structure that, that policy, right?
Okay, thank you. I think the other question I had was around like the unit limits piece. I know that there were different sorts of scenarios in the various like municipalities around having unit limit kind of thresholds, some didn't have unit limit thresholds. So I'd just love to better understand where kind of the trade offs are on those pieces.
Yeah, there's some communities that are like any, any development, you have your inclusionary housing ordinance applying. And so, I mean, there's, there's some circumstances where the, the scenario just doesn't match, right? Like you can't do a, a five percent set aside of five unit development, right? So that what I think happens in those situations is you're really leaning into that, that fee and lieu compliance to, to determine what, what that impact needs to be and what that fee would need to be. So.
Okay, that's helpful. So like essentially the thinking then from the HPC and the four unit threshold was leaning more into units or like creating of units rather than just fee and lieu?
I feel Counselor Ryan, I might, I might look like you were eager to, to step in on that. No. I'd, I'd defer to the, the HPC on how we got to the appetite for an IHO to be drafted to kick in at that four unit. how we got to the appetite for an IHO to be drafted to kick in at that four unit unit uh area, but that's what's written in the request for, for council action.
I, I was just going to clarify, it's above four units. Yes, which is important with our, with the zoning uh that we just put through.
Yeah.
I think the thought was there might be a linkage fee for something under or four units or under, but I think we're awaiting to hear back from the, on the study, but I defer to our esteemed chair to, to clarify that.
And I, I think that having a unit limit of some kind about where and how it kicks in was what was talked about, and then how many was to Counselor Ryan's point. Um, essentially just based on that we have that cap in our zoning for the next few years. So it was to put apples and apples, recognizing that that's, that's not, it's not apples and apples. Um, and more also that we have um like seen some, some feedback from um I think Littleton and Longmont that some of the um some of the, the lack of delineation between like types of development was difficult at first and that they needed to do that later. And then also recognizing that there's just the, when you're looking at those um, the, the penciling market numbers with different unit sizes is, is different. And so four is kind of where you see a little bit of a shift in some of the numbers that we've seen. I don't feel very strongly that it needs to be four or if it should be higher potentially. It's unlikely that it would need to be less, just to be totally honest. Um, I think both in terms of like the amount of fees that you can actually you know, support and waive, um, if it's less than four is harder to, to make, make sense. Um, also the idea that if somebody's just building a house, that there needs to potentially be a linkage fee or something of that nature that goes along it with the same theory here to make it more even, but the idea that you would ever have them required units is just not really true, right? It's just not honest. The other thing that I think we talked a lot about was just in that um, the potential of ownership versus rental markets and wanting to keep those things um just operating separately, even if they both have IHO. Uh, so those, those were all reasons for that. I don't think that four is actually necessarily the correct number. It was more just to give the indicator that was about a multi-unit versus like smaller builds. And again, it's not necessarily attached, right? Because if we see, say a subdivision go up with sixty houses, we still want this to be the case there, right? Um, so it's not about attached versus not attached. It's really about units being built at a time.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's helpful. And I'll be curious, particularly after the Nexus study, like I'm, I'm just thinking about some of the like new build, very expensive homes that are going in and to me like putting extra fees towards maybe more affordable multi-unit like developments versus not putting fees on less affordable giant single-family homes. I don't know, I just would love to like debate and better understand some of that um as we move forward and thinking about um these pieces. So um, that's really helpful to understand where you all landed. And then I guess the other piece was like just the AMI question, and I know that's probably just something we can debate when there's the draft ordinance and we're moving that forward, but I found it interesting with the cap of where the like threshold or the ceiling for one Prop one twenty-three was sixty percent AMI, our biggest need um in housing is for zero to fifty percent AMI. And like, I think time shows that like fo- folks build toward, towards the eighty percent, like towards the highest threshold. Um, so maybe this is just me signaling that I would love to have a conversation about the AMI as this process moves forward to make sure that we're targeting um both to meet our Prop one twenty-three um requirements, but also to meet our greatest need. Thanks all.
Counselor Furman.
Yeah, thank you. To reiterate, thank you for all the work that you've done. I, just jumping right into my question, um. So, a, a, I don't know how much you spoke with the other cities that have uh the inclusionary zoning, but as you look across uh the cities in the state that have uh requirement mandatory inclusionary, not, not incentivized ones. Obviously, a lot of them are far more aggressive. In fact, all of them short of Littleton are far more aggressive in their percentages. Did you talk to them and find out i- is there um reasoning behind this? Like they're accepting the reality that it's going to drive away some basic uh some buildings that are um that they're willing to accept losing, or were they more ambitious for a particular reason? I just I found it striking that so many of them are, are have a high enough percentage that I suspect it drives any kind of building away. Um, did you have conversations with them about their aggressive percentages?
Um, I haven't had conversations directly with them, but that was noted in the, the both consultants and some others whom we talked to about other, other communities policies on, um, you know, you could, you could design a policy that limits growth in, in a city too, right? You know, you could make it so aggressive that that becomes a lever for, for a city to control how much growth does come to, to a city. Um, that said, we didn't have that conversation too directly. I think how we've looked at the, the policymaking here is uh kind of how do we find a recommended level where uh it's, it's a very soft introduction of the policy, right? So it's a, it's a uh very modest percentage set aside. It's a fee and lieu amount potentially that, that maybe is easy to buy, buy out of, but then that period of, of escalation uh to get from a, a five percent set aside to conceiving maybe of an eight percent realm or something allows us to grow the policy to a point where we're finding uh what's sustainable without, without scaring development um to wits and, and to outside of our community, so.
And, and I, I will also acknowledge that I'm, I'm glad that this is a mandatory program and not merely. I mean, my understanding is the voluntary programs tended to be not very, uh, the inclusion, uh, inclusionary zoning that was just incentivized. Have not been very effective, my understanding is they, some have communities haven't used them at all. So I, I guess my other question is uh for the chart, you had the, a sort of breakpoint of the ten percent profit, right? The yield on construction. Did that ten percent um yielding construction profit number come, is that like a standard number that came from industry and developers? What drove the ten percent yielding construction number?
So the yield on cost numbers uh differed for those three different scenarios. So the ten percent really applies to building townhomes for sale, uh, is that that ten percent comes through for a townhome. Uh, looking at the, the others, uh, a three-story rental would be a six point five percent yield on cost, right? Uh, and then the five-story rental remains at that six point five level too. So uh really, really it was paired to the formulation or the build scenario, the development scenario that that we were targeting that. So it's not ten percent for, for all of those.
I know, I appreciate that correction. Sorry, my mistake. Um, but I guess my question is um those numbers, the ten and the six and a half percent, um were those based on, uh, is that like a, a sort of standard yield on cost or is that?
It, it was general, the market analysis from our, our consultant. So I, I can go back and, and kind of reference uh their citation of those numbers. I'll, I'll track that question, but I don't want to I don't want to miscite it, uh, so.
Understood. No, I'm just trying to understand because of obviously it's, it's sort of critical when the, all my questions are around the idea that critical point at which you drive any kind of building away and it becomes more of a lever, as you point out, to prevent growth. So um, those are my questions. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Low and Counselor Ryan.
Thanks, Miss, Mr. Connor, for that presentation and uh just uh, th- this does reflect, um, I think, I think all the HPC members can, can confirm this. This reflects a whole heck of a lot of meetings and discussions about inclusionary zoning. Um, so thanks, Chris, for your work. Um, thanks, Counselor Mayat Guerrero, for, for leading us through thi- this many, just these many discussions. And it does feel like we are, we are finally sort of aligned and, and pointed at sort of a, uh, in, in a direction that, that hopefully we can pursue. Um, just one thing that I, it occurs to me that those of us who, who have been through ten plus meetings on this uh probably know by heart right now, but may not be obvious to folks that haven't. Um, IZ is inclusionary zoning, IHO is inclusionary housing ordinance. Same, same thing, just for anyone following along at home and wondering what those acronyms mean. Um, Mr. Connor, just on, on the slide that you, that you did a masterful job of walking us through the, the slide that is um impossible for, for any human to digest in, in under, in under ten minutes, um, but that you, you really helped us do. It, is it, is it a fair very rough uh sort of summary of that slide and sort of the takeaway? You, you kind of already, already did this voiceover, but just, just one more time. I, I guess the very rough uh takeaway, I feel like we all got from that slide after the presentation our consultants did was um, there's a lot of, there's, there's, it's infeasible to build three-story and five-story units right now for a lot of builders under current market conditions. That's more or less true at, with no IZ, and it's probably true at a five or ten percent IZ. But the five or ten percent IZ is not the critical thing that makes a project pencil or not. The key thing that would make the project pencil are larger, broader macro conditions that the IZ is not going to control. And to the extent that the IZ has an extremely marginal effect on those on those uh conditions at five percent, it can be offset with sort of additional carrots, i.e. fee waivers and fee adjustments. Is that sort of a, a fair summary of that slide?
That, that's, that's exactly the point. So a, a, a good way to, to kind of think about that and um addressing Counselor Mayat Guerrero's uh point about the timing of the policymaking right now is the, the inclusionary housing ordinance isn't going to break the camel's back on the yield on cost on those those big rental projects, right? That's not the factor that's going to make something uh, uh not pan out, right? The, the factors are macroeconomic as, as Counselor Low mentioned. So like imagine the scenario where on that chart at the baseline development, everything was green lights and development was happening in Lakewood for those, those uh three stories or, or larger rental, rental development projects. Like you would ideally like you, i- i- if we hadn't gotten to a point where we had an inclusionary housing ordinance, then we would be wishing that we had, we had done that policymaking for uh the, the kind of more, more bountiful times of development happening. So again, inclusionary housing is a market-driven policy. So if, if we're not seeing that development happen, we're not going to see the revenue generating from it. But if we do see that development happening, that's when it works, right? That's when it's going to function. So the idea is now maybe good timing to kind of start laying that groundwork, at least having the the framework of our policymaking done, having our Nexus study performed and having an ability to revisit uh that policy to, to move those different levers to respond to those market conditions in the future. But, but yeah, Counselor Low, that's uh exactly what I was trying to convey. Sorry, that slide was, if it was agonizing for everybody.
No, I thought you did an excellent job actually walking everyone through that. So thank you. And it did, it does, it does in all seriousness summarize, you know, five plus months' work of, of, that our consultants did. So thank you. I think it was worth showing it to vo- full council. I mean, ju- I'm just gonna do this a lot, but it's always because Counselor I Cruz asks, asks exactly the sort of the right action-oriented next steps question. So I'm going to piggyback on her question for a second. I mean, the, the gist is that uh there's, there's clearly an appetite to do this. We, we saw that from the um unanimous vote for, uh, on the request for council action a week ago, right? And the critical procedural thing that has to happen is we need an excess study. And Counselor I Cruz just, I think, made the point that we, to need the next, to do the next study, we have to hire someone to do the next study and do that, we have to put out an RFP if it's above the sort of the, the procurement RFP threshold. And to do that, we need to identify a budget source. So I guess that's a long way of saying, um, Ms. Hudson, you know, is, is one, I think, obvious takeaway from the request for council action last week that we are going to identify a funding source to, to put out uh an RFP if it's above the threshold or to figure out a way of doing a Nexus study as, as expeditiously as possible. I mean, subject to council-approved budget item, of course.
Right, subject to council approval. We would need to find out what the range of cost is and then go through the, the proper procurement process. And then um that would come in front of council as in like an off-cycle appropriation that council would vote on to fund the study.
Counselor Mayat Guerrero, did you have a response?
Yeah, can I, can I, I'm going to yield my time to Counselor Mayat Guerrero. I have a feeling she's going to ask a related question.
Yeah, I, I you, oh. So, um, thank you so much, Mary Strom. Why is my, there it goes. Um. I guess, given that the original study session on this topic where we did unanimously, I believe, approve wanting a Nexus study, uh, I don't mean to just put you on the spot, Ms. Hodgson, but I also know that I've had the opportunity to question uh Mr. Connor and Mr. Parker on this topic a handful of times since that study session. Is there a reason that this isn't like in our current budget and iteration? And I just, it worries me a little bit being two months out, three months out from that original conversation where we did as a council approve that we wanted that and that we wanted that budget and that we wanted it quote expeditiously, I believe at the time also was the word of the evening. Um, just, just like where that is at in the broader conversation. I know that the budget is tight right now, but we, we had articulated that as a priority and I know that um this is not the first, like that Mr. Connor is not in like the positional space to, to make those kinds of choices unilaterally, which is why I'm directing it at you. So I hope you'll forgive.
Absolutely. And yeah, no problem there. I would need to ask Travis because I actually don't remember if a study was included in the budget or not. Um, Mr. Parker, do you have that information? Where are you? There he is.
I don't have that informa- I don't believe a study was in the budget, but I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah, we can, we can work this through. We'll talk to our CFO also and see if um, and see if it was budgeted somewhere. And if not, then we'll start working toward what that funding blend might be. So that'll, that, if it's not in the budget, it will then come in front of you for a special appropriation.
Mayor, can I just reclaim my time to make one final point on this? Thanks. I, I, I appreciate that. I thi- I think maybe you're, you're hearing a couple of us say the same thing. I mean, look, we uh during the budget process, which was smooth and great, and we're all very, very proud of the budget. I think one question a couple of us asked was you know, in looking at the general fund reserve, is it safe to say that there's a little bit of cushion for major council priorities? And the answer we got was yes. So I mean, it, I mean, I certainly defer to city staff on where to take it out, but absent another good answer, it seems to me you know, whatever it is, a hundred K, a hundred fifty K, two hundred K, maybe less. And from some discussions, it sounds like it might actually be less than that. It, it seems like it could potentially come fun, come out of the general fund reserve. And I, I think from the vote we got a week ago, this seems like a clear council priority. Um, and because there's sort of, there's just a process clock on all this, we can't start the Nexus study until we've put out the RFP, and we can't do that until the budget is getting sorted. So I, I kind of, I would really like to see this resolved ASAP. Um, so that we can start the procurements, that we can start the Nexus studies, so that we can finally do this. I, I, I feel very confident on this that I'm not speaking for myself, but speaking for all of HPC that we are ready to get the Nexus study underway and done so that we can land this particular plane.
So we hear that loud and clear.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Counselor Ryan and Counselor Ken Cruz.
So I'm going to pick up first with that last piece. I'm going to echo that and just express some frustration a little, a little bit on this. We had a consultant come in on this last round, um and, you know, uh, we didn't have to vote separately on hiring that consultant for that. I, I think some of us were a little frustrated with the results on of what, what was presented to us from that consultant. But just in terms of process, I don't believe we had to have city council vote specifically on hiring the consultant. It just happened. And that was something towards that happened towards the end of the year. It wasn't during, during a budget. It was after the budget had already been passed and we were trying to push through pretty quickly on that. So to the extent we can skip the step of having to bring it to city council to, in order to hire a consultant, I'd very much uh uh be thrilled with that because this has just been a little bit tedious, uh, if we have to come back on, on that. To, to uh the Mayor Potem's question about different fees, one of the one of the things that we were hoping, I think, to get from um the consultant that didn't really materialize really was a breakdown of what the, how much the different fees uh permit fees, so forth and so on, and how much they add up to. But one of the things that But one of the things that they did identify without putting a number on it, and maybe it's impossible to do so because it may be case by case. There's an infrastructure bond that the developers have to put up. And so percent, some percentage of that bond being waived could certainly be another fee that could go towards minimizing whatever impact the, the 5% or more would, would lend itself to. And that's not an insignificant number. So to the extent we're trying to avoid dipping into parkland dedication fees, and I, I certainly hear that comment. That's certainly one of the things. And I think the exploration of all of those fees is still a story yet to be finished yet, because I think we're still waiting for those numbers. But hopefully we can come up with something else. And to Counselor Furman's questions, I, I think he hit it on the nose as well. It all depends on, you know, the analysis depends on whether the consultants got it right in terms of what the, what the percentages were, right? So if it's townhomes, it's 10%. If it's rental units of three to five stories, it's some other number. We're, we're basing it that the consultant got those numbers right. But for example, if you have knowledge or expertise and, and just based on working with your clients, that maybe those numbers are different. You know, certainly that may play a role into how we look at, at those. And then to Counselor I Cruz's point, I think it's certainly whenever we do get to hire the consultants, I hope they won't just look at the 80% and 100% that they will look at that range, right? So if Prop 123 says 60%, I hope that there's going to be flexibility with this consultant that they'll give us some, some more options that we can play with rather than our last go-round. Oh, and then Bill Furman, Counselor Furman also asked the question of have we talked to other cities? And I, I can speak for myself and Counselor Low. We had a chance to speak somewhat briefly with one of the people who is in charge of doing Littleton's version, and she's been very, very happy. And has expressed to us that they've not seen any slowdown in development because of the 5% AMI. I've had an opportunity personally to talk to a number of the city councillors on the Lakewood, I'm sorry, in the Littleton City Council who have also shared that same sentiment and have also expressed some interest in maybe even revisiting it to a higher number. But as Counselor Low and, and Mr. Connor have made the point, I think very clearly, there is no market ability to go beyond 5% at this point in time. And so the safest place to start with is, is 5%. So we, we have talked to a few folks. We seem to be starting with Littleton because that seems to be the safest.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to start off by just asking, has place-based been part of the conversation, right? We know our city has diverse markets. You know, has place-based collaboration rather than having just a flat requirement been part of the conversation at all?
It hasn't been too much of a developed part of the conversation. No, no pun intended on that. I think, I think they've, we've considered kind of ideas around tax increment financing as different policy that could fit within the broader ecology. But we haven't thought about narrowing an inclusionary housing ordinance to a particular like geography or, or place base within the city limits.
Okay. And I guess the reason I ask is, you know, I would definitely, you know, like to, to, to see the nexus study, you know, have that at least specifically geographically differentiated areas. And the reason is, you, you see other cities in Colorado and throughout the nation who have started to find the value in identifying different market areas. I, I, I know Denver has, you know, not necessarily built it in their policy, but they do have overlaying part of, of incentive differences based off of the city. I know Boulder has overlay tools, so it's just something I think would be beneficial for us to have in our nexus study. You know, and, and just be able to provide a clear, you know, overlay, you know, and explore similar flexibility here in Lakewood, just ensuring that, you know, we match our policy to local conditions rather than, you know, just applying a single blanket standard.
Got it.
I have a question. Nexus study versus what we went through this year with our consultants. For the benefit of city council and community members that are watching tonight, can someone explain what's different between what we already studied and what the nexus study would do that we know, you know, needs to be really tied to legislation to make sure that it is, you know, legal and financially sustainable? Can you explain that to me, Chris? Because I, I think that maybe part of that too also comes into the, why did we not vote last time, but why would we maybe potentially need to vote this time? The skipping votes isn't something that you can do. If it's something that needs to be voted on, it's something that needs to be voted on. So if you could help me understand a little bit better, A, what happened in the first one that would be different in the second? And C, what we would anticipate in the difference between cost of the two?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can weigh in on the difference between costs. I think we're, we're really exploring right now kind of how we would price out a nexus or what we might gain for the work that we've done already. We've, we've gotten far with, with the consultation that we've completed. I think the difference is, you know, why a nexus, why another study? From where we're at right now, the consultation really drew up prototyping around three different scenarios of development, right? So it wasn't necessarily based on historically factual information of case study development and projection into the future, right? So they, 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 we'd want to tighten up there, I think, and have, have a stronger feasibility analysis on some of these different policy models. I, I also think that, you know, the nexus really where it's going to, to deliver us to a point is, is assuring that policies that are crafted, are crafted to a level that treats upon the, the problem that we're trying to solve. I don't think that, I, I think our consultation informed upon that. I don't think it, it really kind of locked us in. I think there's, and the commission is, is probably univocal with me in, in their kind of appraisal of, of that consultation's work, that we didn't feel strongly confident that they necessarily got us into that place. So I think drawing a formal nexus is, is the, the best step that we could take to, to make sure that we've informed the policy as strongly as possible. Now, on, on the cost of, of performing the nexus, like I, I don't want to get too far ahead of the process. But in talking to some organizations who are in this work and kind of, kind of feeling it out, considering the work that we have done, that we're not starting from scratch, that scope of a nexus might be able to be adjusted to, to a level that extends the work that's already happened rather than starting from the very beginning, which, in which case would, would bring the scope in a little bit more to make it more of a, of a feasible cost for us to, to accomplish. So it's hard to put a, a finger on right now on what that number of how much a nexus would cost would be without a little bit deeper exploration on, on that question.
Thank you. And so I think with that, what I'm hearing is that it's not necessarily written in stone as of this moment that this would need to come back to city council for a vote because there is a threshold under which you guys can move forward without our voting.
Yes, that's accurate. Thanks, Mayor. That's a good clarification.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And that, I don't have any other hands up. Anybody else have hands on this topic before we move forward? And so, Mr. Connor, is there any specific direction that you need from council tonight?
None, none tonight. We'll just continue working with city manager on the next steps for, for the nexus.
Okay, perfect. All right. Then we shall move on to our next agenda item for the evening and final agenda item for the evening committee reports. Do you have any committees that wish to have it a report this evening? Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a short report for our budget audit board. Thanks to everybody for the hard work on our budget, which was passed in time. And I really appreciate everybody's participation in that and for all the questions and for staff's work and for the board's work. So thank you. Just wanted to note for everybody that our November 12 meeting has been canceled and we'll be coming back online hopefully early next year to move forward on some of the items our committee or our board has put forward for conversation around the some of the, the fees and other forms of revenue, as well as like some city, city priorities to talk about. Any potential conversations about places where fees could be more broad in line to what services cost? Or if there are areas of revenue to fund important council priorities that we might want to consider? So stay tuned for a Q1 reschedule, but hopefully all of the board members enjoy some time off on the talk. And then the second piece, just from the budget audit board perspective, I wanted to say, I think we've been getting a lot of questions and some outreach regarding some misinformation that's spreading on parks being built on and on rec centers being demolished and having a centralized rec center. I just wanted to say, having pored through all of the pages of the budget, there are no plans in our budget at this time to do any development of parks or demolition of rec centers or any centralized rec centers. So all of that information that has been kind of circulated in the community is completely false and is not aligned with any of the plans of city departments and is not in our budget. So just wanted to be clear from my chair perspective that that is not represented in the budget, nor is it represented in city plans.
Thank you. Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. We did have our initial meeting of the ad hoc sustainability committee and put together, worked on some administrative things, put together a purpose statement, things of that nature. Our next meeting will be November 21st from 11:30 to 1:00. And again, we're going to continue to move forward on formulating our direction and initiatives that we're going to be focused on.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no further business, I will go ahead and adjourn this study session tonight at 8:25 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.